Stephanie, you ready?
Yes.
I call the board meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Trustee DeVor.
Present.
Trustee Gett. Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Marfil.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
All right, again, welcome everyone. We would be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on November 16th, 2021. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. We would be at announcements. I just want to take this time to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and Administration and Public Works and everyone who really helped make the Heights look special this holiday season in lighting and in contests. So, thank you for that. And one of the really fun things I get to do as mayor is to present proclamations and we're here tonight with members of the Thornton family are here in force and I have a proclamation I'd like to read and present to the families. So, please join me at the podium and feel free to take pictures and do whatever you'd like. Come on up, join us and take pictures, please. There we go. All right, that's more like it. So, before I read the proclamation, I want to extend my sympathy on the loss of your mother and grandmother. Many personal terrific memories of my own of the Penguin Tap and John and Nancy, three generations of Phalins, have spent time in the Penguin. And, you know, a lot of restaurants and bars that are successful might only have one thing they're famous for, maybe a drink or a sandwich or a specialty, but to me, the Penguin, of course, the pizza was legendary, but the tenderloins, second to none, the catfish, the fried chicken, the bean soup, the salad bar, all those things were just number one, in my opinion, throughout central Illinois and anywhere in the country. So, I'm honored to present this proclamation to you all tonight. And it reads, whereas John and Nancy Thornton ran the legendary Penguin Tap at 4319 North Prospect Road in Peoria Heights for 38 years, and whereas the Thorthons raised six children in their Peoria Heights home of nearly 70 years, 4722 Ellen Court, and their second home, the restaurant building, not only a successful business, but six productive adults. Whereas the Penguin was a central Illinois gathering place, hosting everyone from major leaguers, Chicago Cubs, great Mark Grace was a regular, to Pabst Brewery workers, CEOs, prominent politicians, journalists, brides and grooms, et cetera, becoming one of the first local eateries to put the Heights on the map as a regional dining destination. Whereas fire destroyed the original building, believed to be the first air-conditioned bar in Peoria County in 1991, with the Thorthons providing their faith and confidence in Peoria Heights by rebuilding immediately. Whereas the Thorthons worked very hard to make enough to get by, starting their days at 6:30 a.m., working to 2:30 p.m., going home for a nap, then back by 4:30 until close at 10 or 11:00. They were also uncommonly generous, raising money for the first ambulance in Peoria Heights, for the high school band uniforms, for a deceased police officer's widow, and on and on. Thanks to the Penguin, Peoria Heights public safety workers never went hungry during the holiday shift. Whereas John and Nancy started in the restaurant business with Gil Morton of Gil Supper Club and Pete Van Aken, Van Aken's old place, and lived to cook with his kitchen creations, the everyday pizza, the Thursday night turtle, the Saturday night prime rib, the popular tenderloins, always gone quick. Whereas Nancy Thornton somehow found time to also extend to her yard and her precious orchids, setting the fine example for other Heights homeowners. Whereas the Penguin was not just a business, but part of the very fabric of Peoria Heights, with the Thorthons having the community's back and the community theirs. Whereas the couple that met for the first time at ages 13 and 11 left us too soon, John in 2001 and Nancy in November of 2021. We, the people, we, the Peoria Heights Village Board hereby proclaim John and Nancy Lou Thornton and the Penguin Tap official village treasures. May they be long and fondly remembered.
This really is an honor. I could talk without crying. My dad did a lot for the Heights because he loved this town. His other passion was his hometown of McGregor. And I'll tell you what he told them when they gave him the key to their city, because he did a lot for them. His words were, "Thank you, it's such an honor, but there are probably way more deserving people out there than me." That's just how my dad was. This is such an honor, it really is. I thank you all. I'm sure they're looking down with a smile. Anybody else?
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Comments from the audience?
Go on once, twice.
Okay, we'll move right on to trustees' reports. The first is Administration and Finance, trustee DeVor.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I really have to report tonight is that Chief and I have already kind of started talking about the budget for next year and getting everything ready to go for that. So, I would just encourage everybody in their departments to kind of start looking at that and being prepared for when we come back from the holiday, that we'll be hitting the ground full steam ahead on that.
Anything else, Dustin? Okay, we would be at Facilities, trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor Villan. I have nothing to report at this time unless Superintendent Casey has something to add.
No, I just said we went out for, I called around for to get some bids or estimates on Firehouse Number Two, so, just waiting for the dollar amounts to come in now, so, should be hearing something soon.
Thank you, gentlemen. Economic and Community Development, trustee Kazam.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I want to talk about tonight is that we have our third meeting with Farnsworth Group tomorrow. It'll be an hour and a half meeting regarding the streetscape on Prospect. It's been going very well, we've been making a lot of progress, but, you know, we're on an expedited timeframe. So, I'll be emailing all of my fellow trustees with updates from that meeting.
Thank you. Neighborhoods and Parks, trustee Weisenberg, can you hear us?
I can, Mayor, thank you. I have nothing to report.
All right. We would be at Public Works, trustee Marfil.
I have nothing specific. I'll defer to Mr. Chandler, Mr. Casey.
Gentlemen, anything?
Just a quick mention that it is getting cold again and please watch your frozen pipes under your sinks and stuff.
I'd like to.
Nothing really, just no snow yet, but it's coming, so, that's all.
All right, Public Safety, trustee Wigginton, are you able to hear us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking the time to visit that lower Firehouse Number Two. I know I and the fire department appreciate it and I thank Mr. Casey for getting some attention to that as well. As far as Police Department, no shave, December continues and the Police Department just wants to remind you that all funds raised go through the South Side Mission. I think we had a, earlier this month, we had a neighborhood watch meeting, which we had small attendance, but the takeaway message was the department remains focused on speeding of the neighborhoods and they're keeping watch out. So, if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to give the non-emergency number or call and, of course, if there is an emergency, never forget to dial 911. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your report. Anything else, Dustin?
The only thing I'd add, Mayor, is that as trustee Wigginton stated, no shave December went to the South Side Mission and no shave November went to the Peoria Heights High School of the Food Bank. So, I also want to acknowledge that.
Very good. We would be at Old Business. Any old business come for the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into New Business. The first is Approval of Ordinance 2021-1669, Adoption of 2021-2022 Levy, The Village and Library. Trustee DeVor asks for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-1669.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee DeVor, please set this up.
Okay, so, this is just our annual ordinance where we have to adopt for our levy. In your packet, you do have a breakdown for the village and the library. I know the village did work really hard to drop its percentage from what we did in 2020, so, we did, we were able to get this levy down a little over a half a percent. I can't really speak too much on the library, but I know that Shane is here, so if we had any questions, he could answer them for us.
Before we get to that, just to thank you for your hard work on this, on the finance side, the reduction of the levy, to me, it means something, even though maybe on your property tax bill, since we don't take a large bite, it might not mean a lot of money, but I think it says that we're committed to low property taxes here, so thanks for your work on that. Sean, would you mind coming forward, please, and telling us a little bit about the library? And thank you for your fine work there.
Yeah, thank you to the board for letting me speak for a couple of minutes here. Just once again, thank you to the village for all the cooperation we get over the course of the year, especially to the Public Work Department. I know that they're going to do great work for us. We also still have some of your pylons from last year to mark areas of the parking lot, so if you're looking for any missing ones, we've got them. Yeah. So, in respect to the budget, we have been fortunate enough to stay about the same on our levy for the last couple of years. We really haven't put anything into this year. We've got the same stresses that we've had in the past, mostly the roof. We've put a lot of money into the roof in the last year. We've had a nice ice dam last February that busted a nice hole in the ceiling. And we've got additional leaks and patches and things we've done. Plus, minimum wage, as you know, is one of those things that we continue to deal with. However, we did have some good news in the past year and we were, I'm not going to speak to specifics because we don't have anything finalized, but we were fortunate enough to receive a large gift from an estate as a remainder beneficiary. It's significant enough that we're talking at the board right now about new construction and remodeling of the library. If we're fortunate enough, we don't have anything fixed right now, we are talking with a building consultant about plans to, for further discussion with the community, the board, Village Board, as far as what kind of things we want to do. But, as always, we've talked about expanding the library and adding some study rooms, remodeling the interior, which hasn't been touched since the building was created 20 years, plus years ago now. In addition to that, we don't know where we're at in respect to any kind of state library grants, but we do want to pursue that if we have the kind of plan that, you know, we only get these chances occasionally as a library. You know, if we're going to take the opportunity, we might as well make a significant mark on the community and on the library. So, if we can, I would, I'm hoping that we're able to get some significant help from the state in the form of a state library construction grant. As you know, if you've looked at or heard recently about the Bloomington Public Library or the Galesburg Public Library, they received very, very large investments from the state and I'm not going to say that we're going to get anything close to that, they're much larger libraries and they were in much poorer condition physically than we are, but that's still, if we're fortunate enough to receive anything from the state, not everybody gets their grant accepted. But if we were, that would be a nice chunk of money that we could add on to what we have now. And I don't know where we're at, we're, it's continuing discussions with the board and with our consultant, but we expect that in the coming year, you'll hear some announcements from the library regarding new construction remodeling and I'm, you know, I'll be happy when I can actually tell you a little bit more about where we plan to go. But it's good news for us, I hope it's good news for the community, we'll see where it goes, but let me know if you have any questions.
Before we get there, counsel, since we only do this annually, would you explain to those watching at home and in the audience what we're doing with the levy and why we're setting the levy also for the library since they have their own elected body?
Sure. The Village of Peoria Heights has, as long as I can remember, always levied the taxes for the public library, even though it's got a separate board, we always levy tax for the library. In terms of our tax levy, I think it's significant, you know, we do this every year. It's easy to forget, you know, what we've done in years past, but the fact that our levy is actually going down is kind of unprecedented. As long as I've been a municipal attorney, I've never seen that happen in any community, so it's something to be proud of and to me, that's a huge takeaway. But this is our property tax revenue that the village is able to set and, like I say, most communities raise it every year because there are always increasing demands on revenues. So, village should be proud that we're able to keep it down.
Thank you.
Anything else that you want me to specifically address or?
No, I think you did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
So, we would be at a point where if anyone had any questions or comments, now is the Either of you gentlemen on the phone have anything?
Mayor, I do not. Let's pray then.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nothing here either, Mayor, thank you.
I think trustee DeVor, you did a good job and counsel and Sean, so if you're ready for the question, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Marfil.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next is Approval of a Project Services Agreement between the Village of Peoria Heights and the Farnsworth Group to retain Mr. Wayne Aldridge as Director of Community Development. Trustee DeVor.
I make a motion to approve the project services agreement.
A second, please.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Back to you, trustee DeVor.
Okay, so, after we went through our comprehensive plan, we then had our strategic planning session, right? And our number one goal from that was to fill this position for the Director of Community Development. We've had, we went through several interview rounds with an interview board and then another board of us and we really came up with great candidates that we had. We did find, though, that our best candidate was Mr. Wayne Aldridge. So, we went into negotiations with him. So, he is now employed through Farnsworth Group, so it worked out for us to come up with this agreement with him to work more as a consultant instead of hiring this position on full-time. By working for a consultant, we do save from not having like benefits and things like that and then we can more direct, direct him in the things that we really need him for. He has an amazing background and experience that was really unprecedented against every other candidate we had. He has worked tons with IDOT and with grants and things, so he really is a benefit to us that is immeasurable. So, the contract you have in front of you is how this will work with him being with us as more of a contracted employee instead of a village employee.
Very well explained. Dustin, anything you want to add?
I'll just add that we did have a lot, we did have a lot of good applicants and we narrowed it down to three, but I would agree with trustee DeVor when it came down to what we were looking for as a village. I think Wayne was a perfect fit on paper and then I've had the pleasure of working with him and meeting with him already and his wealth of knowledge on the topics that we're really, we're looking for. And what we have coming down the pipe with grants is just, it's a huge win for Peoria Heights and a huge win for this administration, so.
And I would just add that a couple of items on the agenda tonight, both water consultant and this item, have come out of our strategic planning as high priorities. So, we just approved the levy and I did want to say that a lot of times, people in the community might say, "Well, you spend a lot of time on economic development." The economic development provides us with a lot of revenue where we can keep property taxes low, but one of the issues that we also focused on in the strategic planning session was doing so much more for residents and doing more on the community development side and finding grants, doing neighborhood streetscapes, et cetera. And this, I believe, is our commitment to that and I too am very pleased with Mr. Aldridge and his qualifications. Wayne, would you mind stepping forward, telling everyone a little bit about yourself and then we'll take some questions and comments?
Sure. Good evening, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, a little bit about my experience, been a lifetime public servant, that's for about 38 years now. Started out with District Three of Illinois Department of Transportation out of Ottawa at that time. Worked there for about 14 years, primarily in the area of construction and then program development, so, doing studies on projects and then actually doing designs on projects up in Ottawa. So, most of my projects, though, construction and design projects were in the Bloomington-Normal area. So, projects I worked on, major projects, Interstate 39, Veterans Parkway through Bloomington-Normal, I-55, I-74 round Bloomington-Normal. So, those are just some of the major projects worked on at IDOT, worked with great people and got a lot of great experience on that type of project. I'm a civil engineer, I didn't mention that, so that's not as an apology, but if I act kind of weird sometimes, that's maybe why. But then after IDOT, I went to the town of Normal. Served there for about four years as city engineer, worked on various municipal projects for the town, designing and planning projects there and building them. And then the council was contemplating revitalizing the Uptown area. So, they did a search and the city manager one day just came knocking on my door and said, "Hey, Wayne, what would you think about leading that project?" So, again, a very big challenge in Normal, if you've been over there and if you went to ISU or whatever and saw what it was before and then what it is now, really great transformation. Served as Uptown Development Director for about 12 years. So, the type of project that was, did a lot of grant writing, got two major grants from the federal government, Tiger Grant for $22 million for the transportation center and then a build grant also from the US Department of Transportation for about $16 million and that was for the underpass. So, just, that's a project that still hasn't been built, but recently got a grant for that. And if you've been there, this redevelopment included rebuilding streets, underground infrastructure, and also major building developments, as well as helping out some of the smaller businesses and rehabbing some of the existing buildings. So, welcome you to go to Normal to check out Uptown Normal. After spending 12 years there, I served as Public Works Director for about six years and then retired in August. So, the arrangement with Farnsworth Group is convenient because it's a, I can work with them without, you know, having any hazard to retirement benefits, things like that. I will be and commit to you that I will be like an employee to Peoria Heights. So, my allegiance primarily will be to the Heights and to the village. So, just want to say that in public. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Feel free, trustees, to add any comments or questions at this time.
I just want to say thanks to whoever was involved, trustee DeVor, chief Sutton, in this process. I think that Mr. Aldridge's resume speaks for itself, so I think this is a huge win for the village, so, thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you, trustee Marfil. Incidentally, I forgot to mention, it was myself, chief Sutton, trustee Kazam, trustee DeVor, and I also invited Superintendent Eric Heath to participate in the interview process and he did as well. I think I, did I cover everyone, ladies? Okay. Anyone else? Any other comment? Counsel, did we miss anything on explaining the contract?
No, not at all. It's, you know, more or less what most people would refer to as a consulting agreement, but, you know, as you just heard Mr. Aldridge say, he considers himself to be dedicated to the village, so, best of both worlds.
I would add, just for disclosure, there is one other project I'm working on at this time with the Farnsworth Group. It's actually an old town in Normal project, so I'm spending a little bit of time on that project.
Okay, and just so you all know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you as well as chief Sutton for walking me through the necessity of setting up the contract with Farnsworth Group and I appreciate Mr. Aldridge addressing that matter as well. As you know, I had spoken about this in the past and I don't think that this raises any issue for me, so I appreciate especially Mr. Aldridge addressing it forthrightly in his address, so thank you very much.
All right, appreciate your comments. Just in closing, everyone, so there's a couple of things that we've already thrown in Wayne's lap. As everyone knows, we have about $68 million to redo Galena Road. IDOT has been really good to work with, but we want to make certain that the road is designed to get every benefit out of that $68 million for Peoria Heights and our residents, that the road is designed safely, that the road fosters economic development, that the road would also foster some additional residential development in that corridor. We know the road is not safe now, so that will be one of Wayne's projects. The board has discussed Monroe Avenue Streetscape and we have some development occurring on War Memorial Drive, so these are all really important projects that will be in his lap as we speak right now and you also, we've got another item on the agenda with the water consultant, you evaluated those bids for us or those qualifications, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Marfil.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, we would be at a recommendation and approval of a bid for a water consultant, for water consultant services. Trustee Marfil, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Back to you, trustee Marfil.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. At our most recent comprehensive planning meeting, one priority that we determined was to find the state of the water department and its infrastructure. And we decided that we would go out for bids for consulting services and what this consulting service would do for us is basically give us the state of the water department, what the wants and needs of the department are. And as we all know, we have some issues with age, we have issues with upcoming EPA regulations for lead and copper and this consulting service will research the water company and come back to us with recommendations on its state and what needs to be done as far as the capital improvement plan. We had four proposals or four submittals. Chief Sutton and Mr. Aldridge did some research and their recommendation is the selection of Woodard and Curran out of Charleston, Missouri. Just for clarification, this is a, just an approval of the selection for them. After this approval, the staff will negotiate a professional contract for consideration with them. So, this approval tonight does not lock them in, it's basically allowing the, moving forward of a negotiation contract.
Thank you, trustee Marfil. Dustin, anything else?
No.
I didn't have anything to do with this and I appreciate Dave, you and Wayne and Dustin reviewing these. I do know I was pleased because, Mr. Chandler, this was the only bidder that came and actually spent time with you and toured the village, is that correct?
Yeah, they were really detailed and interested in our whole system and we went through it with them all and gave them as much details as I could about it and I think that probably reflected their proposal.
And I think that probably reflected their proposal.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think what you said is very important because this is a very complex water system with lots of high-pressure pumps due to the topography. So I think that them showing up on scene is very important.
Well, again, I stayed out of it, but they won points with me when Chris said there were people here one afternoon and morning that spent a lot of time looking at the wells and the infrastructure. So counsel, we're directing the administrator to negotiate with this.
Correct. Correct. This is really just an agreement or a vote to approve moving forward. Before any contract is signed, it's going to be put in front of the board for an actual vote. So this is really preliminary and very transparent, so I applaud you for that.
And if this didn't work out, then we have, we would go to somebody else, correct?
There are, there are three other bidders. Exactly.
I just want to clarify, Mayor, that this was 100% Mr. Aldrich as far as the report the trustee Marfil has. He did all the legwork and went through all the proposals. And I did not have anything to do with that. We rely on his expertise and background.
And I would hasten to add, you know, this, we just got these on Friday, so this was done.
Hasty.
Yes.
But this has been a priority, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Independent of what was happening at Village Hall, I also went through the proposals and came to the same conclusion. So for what it's worth.
It is, it's worth a lot, and I didn't know that. So it's counsel, I'm sorry I left you out.
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted you to know that we're making the right decision.
Okay. Go ahead, Wayne.
Just a couple of other items of information. So these folks work for the city of Monmouth in Illinois and check with their city administrator and very pleased with their services there. They actually contract the whole Public Works Department, operations and maintenance through this group, which is not very common, but interesting that they're very satisfied with them and have been for 10 years and are thinking about renewing their contract again. So the other, I was going to mention another, oh! In a lot of these proposals, we look for extra items. You know, we ask for certain things, but we also look for other things that they may volunteer that could help us out. And in this case, they have extensive experience with grant writing and looking for grants. And that's with water systems, in particular now with lead pipes, things like that. There probably are several grant opportunities that we may wish to pursue. So they may be helpful with that.
Thank you all very much and for getting this done so quickly. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of ordinance 2021-1670, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and the Popcorn Works and Sweet Shop LLC. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-1670. Second.
All right, go ahead, trustee Kazam.
So as we all know, it's been in the Journal-Star recently, and we know this here on our board, that our newest business opened in the Village of Peoria Heights, the Popcorn Works, which has been under construction for almost two years now. It's the adaptive reuse, historic reuse of our pump house here in the Village of Peoria Heights, and it's a phenomenal business. This is a request for a development agreement for the business development district to receive $11,550 for reimbursement of signage and some interior shelving and that type of thing.
Pete?
Mr. Clarno is here.
Welcome.
If he has anything else to add.
At least come up and tell us how business is and how things are going. And thank you to your, for your commitment to the Heights.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, village trustees. We've been received real well since we opened the store for Shop Small Saturday. And I don't think we would be where we're at if we hadn't had the drive to get the place open and to see the response from the month of December. We're almost done with the holidays, and it's a testament that I think we have the right choice for the community and definitely the children of the community. So we do have some of the expenses that we need to kind of recoup to make sure that our future can go forward. And so with that, we're just really thrilled to be part of this whole community.
Well, I'm thrilled to have you and Linda here in the Heights and doing business. Counsel, I know, I think Nick Nelson drew this up, but please explain what exactly is happening here and what we're approving.
Yeah, this is just a use of the business development district funds to help a business get, you know, sort of off the ground. And, you know, it's going to be, it's dedicated primarily to signage. I think it's the signage, which is, we all know, for a business is very important, especially when you're not right on the main drag. So that is going to be the primary use. There's a little bit for some of the leasehold improvements because they're leasing the property. So again, this is just what the BDD was set up for. So it's a great example of, you know, putting those dollars to use, putting it back in to help the businesses and the business community.
Thank you. So we'd be open for discussion? Any comments? Again, thank you all for, everyone's prepared tonight, and thank you for the good explanation. And Beth, both you and Dustin, I know you worked really hard on this. So thanks to you two for bringing this to us tonight. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, we'd be at the appointment of Sarah DeVore as Village Representative to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a term of January 1 through December 31st of 2020. This is my appointment, so I'd ask for a motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Counsel, take a shot at this real quick.
Yeah, sure, sure. This is one of the mayoral appointments. This is an outside board. We talked about this at the last meeting pretty extensively, when we talked about the convention and visitors bureau and all that they do for, for all of the central Illinois communities, including ours. And so I think trustee DeVore will be a great representative for the village.
Thank you. And both Sarah and Beth, trustee DeVore and trustee Kazam have put a lot of time in on this. Sarah's really excited to get on this board, and they're, I talked to J.D. Dofanzo today. Thrilled to have you get situated, and they're looking forward to having you on the board. Any comments on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you for taking this. This is just a lot more work for you, and I appreciate it. We'd be at miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business to come before the board?
Mr. Mayor, I've got one quick thing. I want to elaborate further on what Mr. Chandler said earlier about the cold weather and the pipes. I wanted to mention the importance of knowing where your shut-off is at inside your house, the interior part of your house. I've been to many houses that have frozen pipes that have busted, and they're standing there in the doorway waiting for me to show up. And I walk in and turn a shut-off off, and it saved, it could have saved them thousands of dollars in damage. So locate your inside shut-off, make sure it works. It's usually where the water heater's at. If you can't find it, call Mr. Chandler at the office, and I'm sure he'll come by and happily show you where it's at. That'll save you lots of heartache and lots of money.
Very good point. Mike, will you get that out on the website and social media, just a reminder? Any other miscellaneous? Mr. Administrator? You had a recommendation about the meeting.
Oh, yes, there is, there are no agenda items next Tuesday. So as of right now, the board, if they're in favor of canceling next Tuesday's meeting, unless they have something they're going to bring to me to put on the agenda, we will not have any agenda items next week.
What's your pleasure?
I'm due to cancel next Tuesday's meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
I had some Christmas cookies for you, but I'll just, I'll eat them.
Any discussion? Counsel, you are with the voice vote on this?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed can show up next Tuesday night. All right, any other miscellaneous? We'd be at payment of the bills. Madam Clerk, we have the bills in the packet, so I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any question on any of the bills? Discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, the bills are paid. Next, we'd be at the treasures report. Madam Clerk?
As of the end of November, there was $5,874,927.3 in the village-controlled accounts. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $1,698,624.77.
You've heard the treasures report. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.